Thank you, very good, thank you. Hi, everyone, good evening and welcome to our regular zoning board of appeal meeting for town of Wareham. Tonight, it's Wednesday, October 24th, 2018, at 6:30 PM, and we are at the multi-service center 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, I'll make a roll call. My far right, Mrs. Wilma Engelman, our town planner, Ken Buckland, clerk Jim Akvachi, far left, attorney Jen Kendrick, Carl Baptiste Senior, myself, the chair, Nazir Al-Talasi, also present, counselor, attorney Haverty, independent counselor for the town, and Mr. Charles Rowley, professional engineer for the town. Before we start, I just wanna make small announcement, Mrs. Engelman, it's her last night with us tonight, we wanna thank her for all her service. She's always been dedicated as much as she can, but I guess she decided, I guess time to do some things for herself. So, on behalf of the board and everyone else, we wanna thank her for her dedication, and hopefully whoever's listening, we are desperately, desperately in need of volunteers, maybe people could come in and fill up some applications, all the boards needs volunteers, so, and hopefully they'll be dedicated like Wilma was. So, that being said, thank you, Wilma, thank you very much. Glad to have you here on this time. All right, then we go off, first thing, we have some preliminary business to do, the meetings for October 10.
I have reviewed these minutes by electronic correspondence and find them to be satisfactory, therefore make a motion to accept as presented.
Motion to accept the meetings by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? So, five, five zero zero. So, before we go forward, Counsel Freeman, is Mr. Morrison sat in the case, right? He's on his way. Who did the forty?
I think it was the five of you, I could be wrong.
Let me look quick, just take me a minute.
I'm pretty sure Wilma reviewed some notes for one missed meeting, I think he's correct. And Jake has stayed abreast of it, so he would be able to vote if necessary.
Last time Jake was here, Wilma, the time before, it's Jake, it's Jake. Counselor, it is Jake.
Is he expected?
Yeah, he's, he called me, he's on his way.
I'm not sure I understand.
I didn't say anything, Siri, sorry, I was trying to make it silent.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So, where do we jump for the first hearing, Sunrise Development, 2382 Cranberry Highway, 38-18.
Sunrise.
What was it? Sunrise, sorry, Sunrise.
This is the one we're doing, I'm sorry.
That's Sunrise.
I was doing some other, take one and pass them on. There you go. That's all right, take your time. Oh, what a fat folder. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on October 24th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571. To consider petition numbered 38-18 for a special permit/site plan review from the requirements of Article 5, Section 590 of the Wareham Zoning Bylaws to Sunrise Development LLC, care of GAF Engineering, Inc., 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., 02571, seeking to construct a ground-mounted solar energy generation facility located at 2382 Cranberry Highway, West Wareham, Mass., that appears on assessors map 108 lot 1001C in the IND Industrial Zoning District.
Okay, very well, just for the record, Mr. Morrison will be sitting in this case because Mrs. Engelman, that's her last night, so he'll join us with this matter. Okay, very well, name an address for the records, let us know what you know.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering, 266 Main Street in Wareham, representing Sunrise Development, Sunrise Development tonight, and with me is Mr. Joe Harrison from Sunrise Development.
Okay, do you want to tell us what you're doing?
So, yes, Mr. Chairman, so, we're here this evening as part of a stipulation agreement between the landowner, the McCarthys, and the town of Wareham. Prior to the town adopting its solar bylaw, as you know, anyone who wanted to do ground-mounted solar in Wareham, for the most part, was, was before the ZBA, there's, there's a couple of those cases. This piece of industrial property at 2382 Cranberry Highway, it does not have sewer and it has very poor soils, so it's most, solar is one of the best uses for this property with those existing site constraints. The McCarthys, once it was determined that the town was going to prohibit ground-mounted solar in the industrial district, the McCarthys filed plans with the planning board in order to protect their ability to construct this type of a project, and so, through a superior court process, it was agreed by the town and, and the McCarthys that a special permit would be requested of the zoning board of appeals for solar on this site, and assuming that we can satisfy this board regarding our compliance with the current solar bylaw stipulations, then that, that litigation would be dropped. So, what we have before you is about 12 acre.
But, let me, before you go forward, so, industrial park is not allowed use? It is allowed use?
It is not an allowed use in the industrial zoning district at this time.
What happened to one on Toby Road?
That came in bef, that came in before.
Before what?
Before the zone change.
When did the zone change?
Must've been in the last bylaw change, must've been in the November 2000, nope, that's.
Now it's allowed?
February 2018.
Now it is not allowed in the industrial district.
Oh. So, but you guys filed before, when it was allowed?
No, so, the, the settlement agreement or the stipulation between the parties was issued in April, and so, we've just, we've gotten to this point now.
So, who'd you agree with, the town, the applicant agreed with the town to have decision?
Yes, Rich Bowen had, had bartered that agreement with, in Superior Court, with the stipulation that they could, they could apply under the old regulations because they had been protected as an approval not required type of subdivision.
All right, so we could go as a special permit, not a variance?
Right.
All right, very well, keep going.
Okay, certainly. So, there's not a lot of moving parts on these solar facilities, if I could just walk you through the plans a little bit, hope so they're on the camera, so, what we're seeing is the existing industrial use buildings, 2384, 2382, I'm sorry, 2380, 2382, 2284 Cranberry Highway, it's, it's not a roadway layout, the, the access to the property is a part of it.
What are those businesses? So I can figure out where.
They're, they're industrial use businesses, I don't know the exact.
I can get them in, I can get them there.
Next to Joe, you go up the hill.
Will they get the Kenworth Truck dealership across the street?
That's from SAV, right?
Yep, correct. No, not SAV, little, little further, but yeah, you got it, next to the, next to the mobile home, next to Gray Hill Mobile Home.
Peterbilt.
Right, Peterbilt, yeah.
Peterbilt, Kenworth, yep.
Yeah, we, we go back to our office plan, Great Hill Estates, the whole park to the east-southeast, the, the entrance to this is just south or east of Addison Park, but the water tower lot and some self-storage buildings, and then there's another mobile home park beyond the, the water tower lot. So, what we're doing is, is we're bringing a dedicated underground electric line from Route 28, it's gonna be a series four, four new utility poles, there's an existing gravel access road that's in between two, two existing drainage ponds, we're gonna start to see the solar array and the maintenance access road, transformer paths. This is why I gave you the half size.
Yep.
We are holding a 50-foot vegetated setback to Great Hill Estates Mobile Home Park. Again, I just stress that, that this design is intended to fully comply with the current bylaw, even though we were trying to protect ourselves and allow the use of it on this piece of property. So, we have a 10-foot setback to the industrial use land to the west, a 10-foot setback to Route 495, a 50-foot setback to the Great Hill State's Mobile Home Park, and, you know, we're well away from our setback, so, the work is limited to grading and, grading associated with what we need to do to comply with stormwater management, the construction of the gravel access road around, which has been reviewed and approved by the fire department, the placement of a couple of transformer paths for equipment, battery storage, and the installation of solar panels themselves, and so, there, there are a lot of details, notes on the plans associated with the, the solar facility, the construction, sequencing, and so forth. We have submitted for Charlie's peer review, so we're, we're waiting to receive that.
Okay, you, how do you have possession of the property?
Through a lease agreement.
We don't have the lease here, do you have it?
I, I did not submit, we have the application to Eversource, which, which was submitted, we did not provide you with a lease agreement.
Next time, you gotta bring us a lease.
Sure.
Please, we had some issues before that. Okay, did you guys start 53G account?
Yes, we did, we submitted $2,000.
All right, I'm just gonna make quick questions, apparently you don't have any answers, Charlie, you just got the plans?
I, I had the plans, I submitted my estimate back in the 11th of October, I haven't received authorization to begin with.
Okay, so why don't, we'll do this tonight, and I guess we'll see you next, next time, but let, let's go quick, is there anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of this project, or against? Okay, I hear none, if we have some quick questions before we give Charlie authorization to, for these, the number, for the estimate, so they could do.
Mr. Chairman, the reason why we haven't started is because an account wasn't created as yet by the accounting department.
Okay.
For the purpose, although we received the check, we couldn't, we couldn't deposit it.
Is it done now?
It should be done now, it should.
They do tomorrow or next week?
It should be done this week.
Okay, do we have still to give Charlie okay?
We have to, and then when it's set up, we'll give Charlie the okay to proceed.
Don't we give him a vote, okay? We give him a vote, or no?
You can give him a vote, but it doesn't happen until I tell Charlie that the money is available for him to use.
We could give the vote pending the money being available.
Correct.
Okay, very well, and he could.
I have one quick question, early in your presentation, you mentioned why the property was functionally obsolete for any other use, is that correct, or?
Well, in terms.
I was half listening.
In terms of industrial uses, you know, with, you know, employees, a parking lot, a big building, you know, you need, so there's no sewer available to this site, and the soils will not pass.
That's what I heard, okay.
For an on-site septic system.
Okay.
So, solar, you don't need.
It won't support an on-site system?
Correct. For sewage disposal.
It'd be pretty costly, prohibitive to bring sewage all the way up the hill.
Isn't those buildings have sewer in front, no?
They have septic systems, which are shown on the plan.
Do you have the notice for the abadas? The abadas notice, do we have it?
It's in, in there.
Let's see, usually it's back here, there we go, there's the list, there's the green cards.
Returns.
Yeah, there are returns.
They did return.
All right, Jake, you wanna make comment?
Nothing.
Jen, all right, no, go. Wilma, any comments? Could use some before you leave.
Jim?
I'm all set.
You want me, you want me to?
All right, so.
The only thing I comment, I'll comment on is that I think 50 feet from the elderly park is, should, it should be more, first, when he first said 50 feet, I, I'm just for elderly, I, I don't know how many of the elderly in that park that you notified that this was going.
I don't think they notified.
But I, I really looked out there and I said, they, there would be somebody to show up if you note, had notified the, the individual, even if you just notified the individual trailers that when 50 feet from, I'm sorry, mobile homes.
On that, on that borderline, I got you.
I, I think, I honestly think that 50 feet, and looking up, and I'm, I'm just saying, it takes a while for the, any, anything you put there to grow.
Company, yeah.
And they're, they're going to see that, I mean, and, and no, and being in that age bracket myself, I, I would not be happy, you know, seeing that, because I know it'll be at least, at least two years before anything grows, because I've been watching the one on Toby Road real close to see how much show, and it's, isn't that much, I honestly feel that that is the main thing, I know they're not gonna get sewage in there because they've been asking for it for a while, and they're not getting it, so I know you're covered that way there, but, and, I just, I just feel that I, a little more consideration, how many panels are you going to put in there?
How many megawatts?
It's roughly 3.2 megawatts.
So, how many?
8,000 floor panels, something like that.
Well, we'll see where Charlie comes back with the buffer, with the studies, and we go from there.
We could look at a screening as well, I mean.
Okay, sure.
Just a couple of comments, probably for the benefit of time for the applicant as well, when I looked at the plan so I could draw up my estimate, there were two things I did notice, one of which was the buffer, my suggestion was going to be that if they could flag that 50-foot distance from the property boundary between Gray Hill and where the opening would be for the clearing, it would help anybody that wanted to see what you're going to see at the end of that 50-foot distance. The second thing was that there were three test pits done on the site that are shown on the plan, they're on the southerly portion of the site with nothing on the northerly portion, there are significant drainage areas within that northerly portion which are not substantiated by any soil testing at all, so, before I do a complete review, I would wanna see the results of the soil tests. My experience, and this goes back probably better than 30 years, that that site is, as Mr. Rogers has said, it's poor drainage, it's all glacial till, so it doesn't drain that well, it drains off, but it doesn't drain down, so those drainage areas have got to be sized based on the infiltration capacity of the soil, which we don't know what it is right now.
Yeah, I think they did the southerly part because that's how the land fetch.
This is the direction of the flow.
It does, but that's where the existing soil test pits are shown on the plan, but there's nothing on the site which is up near the Route 5, Route 25 area, and there are.
Yeah, how they gonna, how they gonna bring the water near 495, it's the highest point?
They're.
You mean that grading it, maybe grade it?
Incorporating drainage systems within the solar panel area, which is a fine thing to do, it will help to reduce the amount that gets at the low point, but without knowing what the capacity is for those drainage areas to, to hold the water that they're supposed to, need some soil evaluation.
Okay, well, this sun, you guys gonna have to.
So, sure, and I would just briefly, just to say that, so, the upper portion of this property is extremely heavily vegetated with a mixer of pines and oaks, I've just given the lady some pictures that I took, granted, pictures from, you know, this summer, and, and so, you know, we'll see soon enough, although it's pretty late this year when the leaves fall, what the visibility is, we're, we'd be happy to hang flags at the 50-foot property line setback, but it, I mean, you cannot walk through that piece of property without a machete.
We'll see when we stake it, when we stake it, we'll go from there. Let's see from Charlie for next evening.
And the 50-foot setback, Mr. Chairman, is what was established by the town in, in the zoning bylaw, and so, we certainly want to strictly adhere to that, and, and.
We still don't have to accept, agree to, I know that's what established, but we still don't have to agree as a board, doesn't mean we won't, I agree, but we'll see how it goes after Mr. Charlie's, Mr. Rowley's comments, we'll go from there.
Yes, certainly.
All right, you know, so let's, let's get him study these plans, come back here with his comments, then we go from there, and in the meantime, maybe you could stake that 50 feet?
Yes.
Okay, when's, when do you like to come next?
We may have to cut a trail along the way, I guess, if, so, you know, 'cause you won't be able to walk through it otherwise.
I know, that's.
That's another, we, we feel like it's a benefit of this, and obviously, it's the polar opposite of, of Toby Road that everyone dislikes, I mean, this has a very mature growth of, of trees to act as a natural buffer.
If you're gonna do pits and everything, you're gonna be cutting trails anyway, so.
They'll probably just bowl, bowl their way through with a excavator.
Yeah, yeah, all right, when do you wanna come, next, next time, we have.
November 14th, sir.
Mr. Akvachi is not here on the 14th, the whole month in November.
I won't be here until December, so you, and we get Thanksgiving in the middle, we only have one meeting in November usually because of Thanksgiving.
Yeah, because Thanksgiving, so December, so, my suggestion, work with Charlie, so when we come here, maybe we could wrap it in one meeting, so.
Sure.
We'll follow the comments and everything, we'll give them authorization to, for the money, and you guys could work, we have plenty of time to do it, so, time of holidays, always like, we always lose couple of meetings, and apparently, we're gonna lose December 26.
We're gonna have one in December.
So, one in December, so we, from the next two months, there's only one meeting.
That's, that's the way it is, then, take your next best available date.
However, before, no, let me go, before we go for, on the 14, no, we're gonna convene on the 14, he won't be here, and he could jump back in with the modern rule.
I can watch the movies.
Right, no, no, you could come back on the 14.
Okay, that's what we prefer.
That's right, I forgot, everybody, you guys gonna be here on the 14?
I'll check in.
Oh, let's see, he has some stuff to.
No.
No?
No, I have something.
He's got seminars, all right, so.
Wareham needs volunteers, as you said at the beginning of the meeting, sir.
Yeah, we do, we do.
So, you really, you really need to come back on the, in December, that gives you and Charlie lots of times to make friend, nice nice.
And I got, I guess, 28 as a no, no, so.
So, what are we in December?
December 12th, okay.
12, 2, 1, 8.
So, can we get a motion to continue?
Make a motion to continue to December 12th, 2018.
All right, we have a motion to continue 39-18 Sunrise Development, do I have a second, to continue December 12th? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, before we leave, can we get a vote to give Charlie, okay, to go ahead?
Go ahead, yeah.
All right, do you have a motion to give Charlie?
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Carl, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, okay, see you on the 12th.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, like I said, do as much as you can, you got plenty of time, so.
Yes.
Maybe test pits, stakes, work with Charlie, see how it goes, all right, we're just gonna go, we're just gonna jump to 2-18 Dakota Partners, because the attorneys are here, Mr. Haverty is here to give us a lot of his time, we're just gonna get him on that way, it won't take long, so let's go to this matter, so every, they could go on, sorry for everyone, but these attorneys been here for long. All right, so the, on the matter of 2-18 Dakota Partners, public hearing still, it's closed, we did come up with a draft decision, maybe Mr. Haverty could fill us in, Counselor?
Or I could explain the colored one that we sent, whichever you want, but there aren't many things to go over.
Mr. Chairman, all the changes to the draft decision that were discussed at the last meeting, I made during the meeting and sent them to Ken at the end of the meeting.
Yep.
So, there's nothing new in what I did from what everyone looked at last meeting.
Goodness.
However, Attorney Freeman's office did send a revised, suggested decision with some changes that they would like to see, so it probably would be productive to talk about those, and if you recall, at the end of the last meeting, we very, very briefly ran through the waiver requests.
Yep.
So, if you've had the opportunity to look at those and have any questions or comments on those, it might be helpful to go over that as well.
All right, Counselor, what do you got?
That, that is accurate, thank you, Mr. Haverty, if it would help you, what we had sent in, and I can pass out unless you have it, is just color-coded, highlighted, because there's a bunch of the changes that were redlined, which you probably still have as redlined, we, you know, accepted, but they still.
Do you have extra?
In your folders, you have that copy.
I've got it, but I got it in black and white, I like the.
Yeah.
The town can't afford a color copier yet.
All right, did you read?
The ones that are highlighted in, in yellow, which there aren't that many, are just the ones that we wanted to discuss, so, oh wait.
I just don't, I like the color, makes, makes it easy, now, before you get going, is your copy, is your copy that we're reviewing, Haverty Buckland copy revised, or is it pre-
No, no, it is Mr. Haverty's final that he just described.
So, Mr. Haverty sent us this, and you turned it into this, okay.
And what, what I turned into, what I turned into, what I did for the document that we still wanted to discuss is highlighted in yellow highlights.
So, anything that's in yellow you wanna discuss?
Couple of things we just wanted to point out, some of them are to discuss.
And, and the things that are in red, are.
Those are tracked changes.
Right, those were the tracked changes.
Those are just tracked changes as we went along.
Right, right.
Okay.
So, on the very first page, it's just filling in the dates, I just wanted to highlight that, and the hearing was closed September 26th, so there's really nothing further to add there, then when we get to.
Now, I wanna add to that, and the version that, that I set out, it's called Buckland-Haverty Revised Version, we have the dates put in.
So, yeah, this, this version is really just suggesting a different way to state those dates.
Okay.
It really doesn't make a difference to me.
I think what it, what the, if I. I think what it, what the, if I recall, it's...
I have no issues with it. You just basically gave months and days and then said twenty eighteen or all in twenty eighteen. I mean, that's fine.
But whether, the comment was that the deliberations, the additional dates of deliberation were not included after the public, public hearing was closed.
That's up to you. Again, I, I, you know, didn't think we needed to spend time on it. If you think that you should add, Paul, so you can advise him if you want to add the dates that you deliberated, it's even...
No, that's, that's not necessary.
Right, it's fine, that, yeah, so, we were just pointing it out. Thank you, Mr. Buckland, but we're fine with it as it is.
But, but the other part of it is a suggestion to delete, where it says March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, April eleventh, two thousand eighteen. The suggestion from your office, Peter, is to eliminate the twenty-eighteens and just say at the end, "All in the year two thousand and eighteen."
I actually think that's the way we got it from you or Ken, but...
That's the way I did it.
Yeah, Ken did, Ken did that. See, what, Paul, what we got was not actually what you did at the night of the meeting.
Because this says...
Things that Ken sent us that apparently were not what you did.
All right, because my version is saying that the deletion came from your office.
Nope, didn't.
It says Rennie Hahn, ten seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
Nope. We sent this version, but we used what Ken had done after you had sent it to Ken.
So, we're gonna accept all those deletions then?
That's how Ken's version is written.
Okay, so...
It's the same one, both.
Yeah, it doesn't. It's, it's neat, it's stylistic. It's really neither here nor there.
Right, exactly, it, exactly.
Just gotta choose one, that's all.
Yeah.
So, Jen, where are we choosing?
I don't, whatever is easiest for...
I think they're the same.
Ken wanted, Ken wanted it that way, that's fine with us.
Didn't leave it, didn't leave it, yeah.
That, let's go with Ken's, next one.
So, the fir, the first thing of any substance into the conditions is page eleven, remember the page numbers are printed at the top. And then in the middle, that subsection C, "I wasn't here, but it's just a question, did you agree on having thirty days to review the plans, or else they deemed approved, or forty-five, forty-five days?" I wasn't here. My folks thought to, thought, I'm sorry?
We accepted the forty-five at the last hearing.
You did accept the forty-five?
Okay, so four, so Ken's copy is good.
Forty-five is okay.
So, Ken's got it, let's go.
And we jumped quite a bit. The next one is page fourteen. And this is where a bunch of items were added, I believe by Ken, even after Paul Haverty's version, unless Paul did type them in that night. So, again, they're tracked, and I highlighted them in yellow. We, we don't have a problem with the concept. The first thing that we were talking about is...
Counselor, is that K or L? What are you talking about? K?
K.
It starts with K. The new things start with K. We don't have a problem with K.
Okay.
L, there are some highlighted things, and, you know, I, I'm not sure who said which, but I think that the term "security" was put in by Ken. I think technically, it's surety, that's not a big deal. The way we understood it was that, and we tried to make it clearer, it's not so much a substantive change, I don't think, just to make it clearer. They were talking about that access driveway leading to Redbrook Road, you know, if it's temporary. So, in terms of the surety, I just added that the driveway is for the phase-two portion of the access driveway. And then, further down, it's again using the word surety instead of security. And I think this is what Ken meant. He had said shall be extended to the completion of phase-three, but I think what he meant is, just a little more understandable to my thinking, to say shall remain in place through the completion of phase-three and construction of the phase-three portion of the driveway, which is what this whole section is talking about. And again, something that I believe, I know was agreed to at the two hearings ago, when I was here, two meetings ago. At the end, we just added back in that the portion of the driveway access may be left as a binder course when it's the temporary. So, those are the only changes there.
I have a question on L.
All right, go ahead.
That very last sentence about otherwise, the phase-three portion of the driveway access may be left as a binder course. I disagree with that entirely.
But, so it has to be final top?
It's got to be completed as noted above prior to the receipt of the final occupancy permit for phase-three. In other words, that, that complete driveway is done before you get an occupancy permit for phase-three. That's the end of the...
We're talking, we're talking about the temporary access road.
Yeah, one, one other time, please, so...
Just to be clear, and if I'm confused, I apologize, you know, we may not disagree, but we're only talking about the, the temporary access road.
The security, this, L through, oh, is some of my suggestions. The intent in L was to make sure that there was security for the construction of the driveway for phase-two, because it was laid out on the plan and said binder only. I wanted to be sure that in the event that phase-three never came to fruition, that there was a mechanism for completing that driveway to Redbrook Road for phase-two. The way to do that, in my view, was to post security for phase-two. And in the event that phase-two is completed and you go to phase-three, then that security can be moved over to the phase-three portion of the project. But at the end of phase-three, when that is completed, then you get the security back upon the receipt of the occupancy, assuming that the driveway is fully completed. So, I don't know why we never want to say otherwise phase-three portion of the driveway access may be left as a binder course. I don't want anything in there that suggests after the completion of, or the occupancy permit, anything that remain undone.
Yes.
May I explain the intent around this?
Yeah, go ahead.
And I, again, I, I'm not sure that there is a disagreement here, but I just wanted to explain on the plan.
So, phase-one is this piece right here.
Right.
Right, at the end of phase-one, there's gonna be a turnaround at the end, right, which actually goes a little bit into phase-two. I'm not sure if these phasing lines are correct or the... So, when we start phase-two, there is no reason to have surety on the phase-two portion of the driveway, because that's part of phase-two. We will have the financing for that. All we're trying to do is differentiate phase-two from phase-three. And what we're saying is, as part of phase-two, we will provide surety for the construction of this access road, the phase-three portion of the access road, right? The surety is only on the phase-three portion, not on the phase-two, because phase-two is, is part of that project. There's no reason, in other words, we, we're not providing surety on the access road for phase-one, because that's part of the project. We have to have it completed. The only piece that would remain in question, or let's say, outside of the scope of phase-two, is this phase-three piece. So, all we're saying is, for the phase-three piece, we're happy to provide surety, right? And what we'd like to do from here on down is just do a binder course, because that will be completed as part of phase-three. So, we'll have the surety in place during that period of time. If we never complete phase-three, then clearly, we'll finish it off.
And in addition, which, which speaks to your point, and again, I, I don't really think there is a disagreement, although I know it seems a little bit confusing. But in M, Mr. Rowley, you covered it. We tweaked it again just for clarity. But if you go down to M, as in Mary, the next section, "In the event that construction of phase-three does commence through, within three years of the issuance of the last certificate of occupancy for phase-two, the applicant shall fully complete the phase-three portion of the driveway access," which covers part of what you were saying. But the next part concludes what you were concerned about. "Should the applicant not do so, the town of Wehrem shall have the authority to use the surety, which is the point of posting it, for the full completion of the driveway access to the Redbrook Road."
But the surety should...
Actually, listen, Charlie, it's...
The surety should be posted as a part of the phase-two portion of the project. If at the end of phase-two, they're gonna leave that access road in a binder condition only.
No.
Because they don't go phase-three.
All right, let, let, let... Counselor, Counselor.
No, we don't, I'm sorry.
Please, please, please. Which theory you guys agree on? The gentleman or Mr. Charlie? I agree with the gentleman. Would you agree with us? We gotta get going. It's Ken, Dave.
I just wanted to hear what you were gonna say.
No, we, we don't disagree with the timing. It's posted at, at that phase-two time.
If you only post the, the security as a part of phase-three, it defeats the...
No, we said we're posting it as at phase-two.
We're posting it at phase-two for the phase-three portion.
Because phase-three might not ever happen. That presupposes that the phase-two construction will be fully completed.
Absolutely.
So, what Charlie is trying to say is, what if you're still at binder code at that point?
No, 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 face, face, but, but the, so the financing for the phase-two portion, when that phase-two starts, will be for the entire project, no binder course, complete, right? So, so there is no, there is no reason to post a bond on that. It's only for the work that is not included in phase-two that we would post the bond. Just like for phase-one, we're not posting a bond for the completion of the road phase-one. Phase-one is being done with the roadways as they're shown, right?
There's a big difference between those. In phase-one, you end phase-one with the cul-de-sac, okay?
Yeah.
If you don't go beyond phase-one, let's suppose something happens and phase-one is the only thing you do.
Yeah.
That road out to great, Redbrook Road will never be built.
Correct.
It'll still be trees and dirt.
That's right, yeah.
All right, no reason for the security then for that, unless you want an occupancy permit before that work is fully completed for phase-one. The plans for the phases two and three show the road in a binder condition only for phase-two. That being the case, if you do not complete phase-three and stop at phase-two, there needs to be security for the full completion of the road to Redbrook Road as a part of phase-two.
We agree for the completion of the road, the, a temporary access road to phase, to, to a Redbrook Road. But if the bond isn't supposed to be, or the surety, it doesn't have to be a bond, is not supposed to be for all the roadways for the phase-two, because as...
Please, Mr. Haverty, Counselor, do you agree with Charlie?
I'm, I'm just curious as to why the applicant wouldn't want the option of actually posting some sort of surety if they are not going to complete. And I know that maybe right now, you're saying, we, you know, we're gonna complete the entirety of phase-two roadwork, and it's gonna be, you know, all the way completed, not to binder code, and therefore, we're not going to need to. But why wouldn't you want the option to do that instead if there are things that need to be completed and you are looking to get an occupancy permit?
Yeah, we, we want to complete phase-two in its entirety.
The bond would be, you know, rather minimal if there's not a lot of work left, or whatever the surety is.
I'm, I'm not sure where the notion that as part of phase-two, we're only doing binder course comes from.
That's where the, that's what the plan said.
No, it doesn't. It's just a temporary...
Can we, can we go forward? We're gonna stick with what...
You want to clarify that, it's fine.
Counselor, Counselor, please, listen.
Let's prove it by looking at the final set of plans.
Charlie, please, let's, we're gonna go what Mr. Buckland wrote and Mr. Haverty. Because we have to come to an agreement tonight, because otherwise, we're just gonna make, make a vote. And that's not gonna stay all night. There's applicants who pull you ahead. We gotta get going, yes.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I would point out is, this, this is a subdivision, right? So, they are subject to the requirements of the subdivision control law. You can't impose requirements that go above and beyond what would be required under any other subdivision. I think a reference to the surety requirements under chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U is helpful here. There are multiple different ways in which that surety can be provided. The applicant has the choice as to what type of security to provide at any given time. The security can be changed, you know, over the course of the project. There's a lot of flexibility there, and I think that's what we should be looking for here. If the applicant wants to get all the work done right up and not post any surety, that's wonderful. But it, it's not a bad thing for them to have the option, and that's really what this should reflect.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can, can you insert this?
That's fine, yeah, that's fine, that's...
All right, next one.
No, I think, I think the only other clarification is what surety is, which is on a letter of credit.
Which was what Paul just described, referencing forty-one, eighty-one U.
So, we're gonna use the word security or surety?
It should be surety, because that's actually the term that's used in the subdivision control law.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right.
Okay, so, if, if that change is acceptable, you can hopefully vote later to do it with that change from Mr. Haverty. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I disagree with one portion of item O. Security shall be in the form of a letter of credit. I'm sure that Mr. Freeman is well aware of what happened when we had bank problems on the Cape back in the nineteen eighties and nineties. Letters of credit ended up being absolutely no good. You can post security in the form of a performance bond, which is a very, very inexpensive way of doing it. But I do not recommend in any way, shape, or form that it include a form of letter of credit. It can be a tri-party agreement. That's one of the things that's in the subdivision control law. But a letter of credit can turn out to be worthless, and if it is, you will have no recompense as far as completing that road.
Can you do a performance bond?
Yeah, we can. That's why we're putting performance bond or letter of credit, that's all.
Performance, but it's, it's fine. But the performance bond and tri-party agreement is covered in the statute that Mr. Haverty will add as a reference, so that's fine.
Mr. Haverty, can you add performance bond?
So long as you remove any reference to a letter of credit.
We'll agree to that, that's fine.
That's fine.
Can you make sure, Counselor? Thank you.
The next, the next one on page sixteen E, that's not new, that's just what we had relocated, because it didn't make sense to include it where it had been earlier, because it was something that happens during construction. And it previously, it had simply been located in the section that was pre-building permit requirement, so that's not new. And then it's, the repeat language was struck there. In D two, these are things that, I don't know if it's Mr. Haverty or Mr. Buckland added, but no controversy there. That's not what I added there. D two, not too much, not too much more, page...
Mr. Chairman, only on E, I would recommend that it not be witnessed by the Wehrem Municipal Maintenance Department. It should be witnessed by either a board member or your designee. That's the soil testing.
Okay, soil test has to be witnessed by Mr. Rowley. Can you add this, Mr. Haverty?
It really should be of you or your designee.
Well, you'll be a designee, because we don't under, well, I might understand some soil, but most of us don't.
Your designee could potentially change. I hope, I hope it doesn't change, you know, if you don't...
No, that, that, we, we didn't change it. This was what we had been given.
I understand, but whoever witnessed the soil test has to have knowledge of it.
Whatever Mr. Rowley wants to, that's fine, you can have, that's fine.
Okay, we'll, we'll appoint somebody, but as, as of now, it's Mr. Rowley, so, next one. Counselor Haverty, you get that?
No, I have not yet, I'm...
Let him have a time, let him do it.
I believe I've mentioned previously, my typing skills are somewhat limited.
I thought you cut and paste.
Coming up with new language now, so it's cut and paste.
Two fingers and two thumbs.
All right, so what is the change to E?
E is, it's not, it's not to be witnessed by Wehrem Municipal Maintenance Department, it's by designated zoning board appoint.
That same language shows up again in E twelve. I don't know why it's duplicated.
Well, he could cut it and paste it.
Do we need it in both places?
No, we don't. E twelve is the loca, correct location for soil testing.
You strike the entire paragraph.
On E, what, E what? E twelve?
So, right, I'm sorry, I didn't read my note. It was supposed to be deleted there, and it was reappearing in E twelve, correct.
Okay.
So, on page sixteen, we're eliminating what you have in yellow.
Yeah.
We eliminated, eliminating E.
I didn't mean my comment, that's what the comment said. But the point was correct, yeah, so...
Mr. Haverty, you get that?
Working on it.
No changes, it, there're just a few things that were read, which were not my changes. They're fine on page twenty. On page twenty-one, F six, we just didn't think we understood it or that it necessarily makes sense. It, I'll read it out loud. "Upon the expiration of two years after the last certificate of occupancy is issued for phase-two, the town planning department and municipal maintenance department..." Be added in the location.
Well, let me correct that in the wording. Upon, F six should read as follows. "Upon the expiration of two years after the last certificate of occupancy is issued for phase-two, the town planning department and municipal maintenance department may review and assess whether a crosswalk with a pedestrian signal should be added in the location of the project's driveway on Redbrook Road due to increased pedestrian traffic resulting from the project. If it is determined that they should be added, then the town will be responsible for obtaining any and all approvals required for same, including but not limited to any required by Mass DOT, and the applicant shall be required to pay for it."
Okay, so it was a section about the signal, which I had forgotten. That, that's fine. That's what we had seen before. That's what we'd seen before. It was just a typo, but it was a whole phrase that was missing.
So, what's the missing phrase, and where is it?
"The town planning department and municipal maintenance may review and assess whether a crosswalk with a..."
May review and assess?
"May review and assess whether a crosswalk with a pedestrian signal should be added."
Yeah.
So, something...
Yeah.
Came out.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. Yeah, that's fine.
So, after the word department and before the word B were entered.
All right.
We skipped over some, some stuff on page twenty. Is it all moot? Is it...
Yeah, if it's just red, if it's not highlighted in yellow, it's just your staff's, let, change is fine with us. On the next page twenty-two, near the bottom, I think it was just some numbering, which can be straightened out. I think our comment says, the numbering issue, I think the first, I think it's H eight... I think our comment says the numbering issue, I think the first, I think it's H Eight, and I'm not sure which sub-numbers it, you know, that they are.
H Eight, A.
A should be the applicant shall collect and test quality, what, test water quality samples from both monitoring wells.
Right, and then so the next one should be B and continue to change the letters, that's all.
Right.
Applicant shall collect, applicant shall collect. It's there twice. I think what's happened is it was just in here twice.
Kevin's got it right.
Yeah, he's got it right. Our copy is right. The same sentence was just inserted twice.
All right, so we're on F what now?
H Eight.
That was H Eight.
Page Twenty-Two.
So whichever the number is, B, I think, the applicant shall collect and test water quality samples from the monitoring wells on an annual basis from the completion of Phase One construction until... And we had agreed on this, that the hearing that I was at, it was your original language. We basically withdrew our concerns, and we agreed to what your language was, which was, until the applicant declares in writing the final phase has been constructed. So now it says until the sooner of the completion of Phase Three construction or five years after the completion of Phase One construction. And then it still says until the applicant declares in writing the final phase has been constructed. I mean, I thought that's what you wanted, that this draft says or five years after the completion of Phase One. And you seem to agree that it doesn't hurt the town. If we, you know, say we're not doing anything sooner, we can stop sooner. And then B should be in concert with that. What's numbered B now? I think it's C. So it just doesn't make logical sense the way it's written now.
Mr. Haverty, what do you think?
He's reading. I was trying to catch up, so what exactly is the issue?
What had been agreed to, but I wasn't here the last time. Previously, we had agreed to the language that the town had given, which wasn't just the town, it was the Water District, remember? And so we had agreed with what you wanted, that it would be, again, the water testing from the monitoring wells annually from the completion of Phase One construction until the applicant declares in writing that the final phase has been completed. So that would be an ongoing obligation with no jeopardy to the town or the Water District until we say, hey, you know, we're not doing anything else, the project's over. Because it was the construction period that you were all concerned with. And then, so what was changed was until the sooner of the completion of Phase Three construction or five years after the completion of Phase One construction. Now, it may be that five years transpires and, you know, they know they're not going to do anything. But right now, it might be a typo, but it still says until the applicant declares in writing the final phase has been constructed. And once you decide which way it's gonna go, then B should just be in concert. Will be responsible for collecting upon, after the cessation of applicant's obligation to do so, which again is what we had agreed to, and the next line isn't grammatically correct, so.
So the applicant shall collect and test water quality samples from both monitoring wells on an annual basis from the completion of Phase One construction until the sooner of, one, the completion of Phase Three construction, or two, five years after the completion of Phase One construction.
Then there's a period, and then there's an uncapitalized new sentence, until the applicant declares.
Which is what we had agreed to, I mean, we thought with the board's agreement, so.
So it would read as follows. The applicant shall collect and test water quality samples from both monitoring wells on an annual basis from the completion of Phase One construction until the applicant declares in writing the final phase has been constructed. That's your option.
What do you think, here, Counselor? What do you think of Ken's comment?
That's the choice. I mean, you can either go back to what I thought we had agreed to, which is okay with us, or, you know, or stayed at the new way, except then you would just strike the last tagline.
Well, so striking that leaves you in a position where you could actually, five years from the end of Phase One, not have completed Phase Three.
Right.
Which we want you to testing until Phase Three is completed.
Right, which is why we thought it was better for you, and we had agreed to it, not to have that five-year thing, but to do what...
It's gonna be from the completion of Phase One until the completion of Phase Three.
No, or until the applicant declares in writing that final phases, that final, the final phase, not meaning Phase Three necessarily, but basically saying, hey, we're done with the project.
Okay.
That was the intent of that.
That makes sense. You want it to be done until the project construction is completed.
Okay.
So from the completion of Phase One until the applicant declares in writing that the final phase has been completed.
Very well. Next one.
Okay, and then, so this is just to make it consistent. The onset fire and water district will be responsible for collecting and testing water quality samples from both monitoring wells. It just makes sense to say after the cessation of applicant's obligation to do so as per H Eight B, which may be C, above. That way it's crystal clear, you know. The first one says when we're responsible, then it says onset fire and water district's responsible after we're no longer responsible. Because what's added is inconsistent with anything we've said. It says the completion of all construction on the project site. So, I mean, that just leaves it hanging without the declaration, so, you know.
So the onset water district will be responsible for collecting and testing water quality samples from both monitoring wells after... I shouldn't say upon. A cessation of the applicant's obligation to do so per H Eight, and it should be A.
Whichever one it is, yeah, maybe it's A.
It's A.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, for what it's worth, I think the legal entity that they're dealing with is the onset fire district, Water Department. That's why it was written that way prior to the change, and it's been all through this.
Okay, so we could change it.
You can change it. I don't think...
Technically, it doesn't make any difference, but I think it's one of the district.
If I changed it and was wrong, I apologize. I thought the town changed it, Ken, but I'm not gonna say for sure he did, but we absolutely...
Can you change it, Counselor Haverty, please?
It's that way all throughout the document.
I'm gonna leave that one to Ken to change afterwards.
And what's the proper name? The, Charlie, you say?
The onset fire district, Water Department.
Onset fire district, Water Department, and we're gonna strike and water, so it doesn't say the onset fire and water district.
That's correct.
It says the onset fire district, Water Department.
I think the enabling legislation calls it and fire district, just the same as the Wareham fire district.
Okay. Next. You get that, Ken?
Yes.
Next one.
Dan, I don't understand Paragraph E under what you've just discussed. The language doesn't make any sense to me.
Again, that was not my language.
Ken?
There may be something missing in it, or there's something that isn't quite with the way it's written. I don't know what it is.
Which paragraph, Charlie?
Paragraph E on that same page.
Ken, you wrote this?
shall not be required to comply.
So this was discussed at the last meeting. The board cannot require the applicant, I'm sorry, cannot require the onset water and fire district to provide an indemnity.
Right.
So if they're not willing to provide that indemnity, we can't require the applicant to do this work. We can't force the applicant to take that risk if they're not getting that indemnity, but we have no mechanism to require the indemnity. So this basically leaves it as this work will be completed unless the onset fire and water district says they won't provide the indemnity.
I was just questioning the language in the run of the words, where it says, unless the onset fire district provides it an indemnification and hold harmless agreement from any claim.
It means the applicant, so.
It's just strange language, strange wording, that's all.
Can you clean it up?
I can clean it up, yes.
Instead of the word "it," we're gonna use applicant, is that it?
More, you just, unless the onset fire district indemnifies, provides an indemnification and hold harmless agreement.
Then, there's just, I think, two more small ones, and then just, I think the wave is real quick. But on H Nine, the only reason I highlighted it is I believe that what was agreed to by the Sewer Department is that there's one grinder pump per building. We discussed that at length when I was here. And I recall the gentleman from the Water Department explained it. And so, you know, we added the model number. I just don't know why it says plural. It's somewhat vague. It's just in brackets, and it says model, and it's, but, you know, it had been, you know, that it's the grinder pump of that specification, which we had referred to as in the correspondence between the Guy Campina and the engineer.
I clarified this with Guy Campina this afternoon to make sure what he was talking about. He said in actual fact, what happens is there are actually four different pumps in one system for each building.
Right.
So it is plural. There's not one sewer pump. It's multiple pumps.
I did talk to Mr. Campina, too. It's, each building, you guys had originally, it's four pumps.
Okay.
So that's why it's pumps.
All right.
Next one.
Okay, that, several pages, Page Twenty-Six at the bottom. We had discussed, when I was here, and it was agreed, that there is the one dumpster that's shown on the plans for Phase One. And then we agreed at your insistence, which we understood, that an additional dumpster would be added at a... And you wanted the northeast corner for the next phase. So I don't know why it says two dumpsters for Phase One, or even two dumpsters per phase, because that's not what was discussed.
You're right. Two locations we meant.
Right. The first one will be for Phase One, obviously, and then later there'll be the one in the northeast corner.
Can you fix that, Counselor Haverty?
Until I understand exactly what it is we're doing here.
J Fifteen.
J Fifteen.
I'm on that. Just let me clean up all of the changes and then start from scratch on. All right, which should this provision state?
It should be, one dumpster shall be included for Phase One.
One dumpster.
One dumpster...
Shall be provided as shown on the plan.
Yeah.
And an additional dumpster station shall be placed in the northeast corner for Phase Two.
Right, for Phase Two.
The corner, correct.
Nothing wrong with that.
So Ken, he had it right, Ken.
No, there was nothing about Phase Two, I don't think.
No, it struck Phase Two. It made it look like there was gonna be two for Phase One.
Ah, okay. All right, good.
So then on the waivers, the only thing, because they had been reviewed, albeit it was discussed quickly, but when I was here at least, again, and I wasn't told that anything else came up at the last meeting, except that you were still asking about what we had phrased, although not intended, as a blanket waiver on the sign regulations and the lighting plan regulations. So the language that I added, which is a separate handout, which I don't know if what you were given has it, but we just simply added, and I think Ken tweaked it a bit, which we were okay with, that, you know, we still have to submit plans for the sign and plans for the lighting, subject to your approval. And the idea of saying, you know, yes, there's a waiver, was really just to sort of show the record that you know that we don't have to comply a hundred percent with all the complex details, but you still have, you know, protection, and that you have to review and approve what we submit, and we're fine with that.
Ken, is it good?
It's good, as long as you're okay with the rest of the waivers.
We'll see. Mr. Haverty, you get that?
Well, there's no change that needed to be made there, right?
No change.
All right. The board, anyone wanna add something? Something else?
I just, this is kinda unrelated, but a little, Phase One is two buildings.
Correct.
Phase Two is one building?
Two.
It's two buildings.
Sorry, Phase Two is two buildings, yes.
Phase Two is two buildings. And Phase Three is one building.
Correct.
So, hundred and fifty units, it's not gonna be fifty, fifty, fifty. How many units off the top of your head? It's not, I'm not gonna make you go digging if you don't know.
Yeah, I think it's roughly sixty, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-two, and then the balance. I don't recall exactly the mix.
And sixty, sixty, thirty, something. And again, this is just my own thing. How many single room, how many one-bedroom in the whole hundred and fifty?
Again, I don't remember the mix. Typically, we do twenty-five, seventy-five.
Twenty-five percent?
Yeah, twenty-five.
That's what I thought, okay. One-bedroom. That's really all I wanted to...
Yeah.
Just a different conversation I was having.
Print this out. I can print this out here in the...
Yeah, let's print it.
It's ready.
Is Paul ready?
I am almost ready.
Ken, you wanna...
No.
Somebody wanna speak their mind before we make a vote or a motion?
I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
About the phases and the road that goes around. If, saying, Phase Three is not completed, what are you going to do about the cars coming in on Phase Two? You have a turnabout on Phase One at the end. Are you putting it in another turnabout at the... And before you get to Phase Three?
No, that access way will be completed as part of the Phase Two, even if Phase Three isn't done yet.
The whole road around...
Be completed, yes.
Completed, and paved, and everything else.
Yeah.
That's why we're making them do surety bond, performance bond.
I mean, the way he was explaining things, it just didn't sound like you were going any farther than the building on Phase Two for anything, you know? I mean, just the way you explain things here tonight, and I'm listening, and I'm saying, okay. As far as I was concerned, it was supposed to be in one and out the other possibility.
That's right.
On, for Red Brook was gonna be not, the state wasn't going to finish going up and widening the area. But now that you've said it's gonna be right around, that people are going to have, I mean, it's gonna be very, how can I put it? A little bit complicated for people.
But they will have the access.
If you don't have the right markings too, you know? Especially that when Phase One is working, you're working on that, and they know they can go up and, they'll have to turn around. The only thing you can do on that is mark it, like, no exit, you know, as you're going in for Phase One. Because, for they won't think they're walking around.
No, I have to give it back to Paul first.
Just...
We can pick it up later and for the signatures, if you wanna vote on it.
I don't care how many people come in, the visitors, they need to do, have at least an idea of what's going on at the end. You know, or not going on, let's put it that way.
Right, right.
I mean, that's the only thing I was thinking. I mean, I know it's late in the project, but I wanna, I wanna get everything straight before you go ahead and get the go-ahead.
Okay.
All right, very well. So we're good?
Yeah.
Guys, Counselor?
As soon as this attaches, I'll send it to Ken.
All right, very well. Okay, anyone else wanna speak their mind out? Okay, let's hear some motions then.
I make a motion to approve based on the decision that was just discussed.
Okay, we have a mo...
Under the conditions, however you wanna state it.
Okay, we have a motion for petition two dash eighteen Dakota Partners, three-one-oh-two Cranberry Highway. We have a motion to grant by Mr. Akubachi based on the condition we just spoke on. Do I have a second on that?
Second, Ken.
We have a second by Mr. Morrison. All in favor? All in favor, signifying by saying aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. Done.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
See, that was easy. See, that was easy. Seems like we just got started a couple nights ago.
I told you when we walked in, I wouldn't cost you more trouble.
Had they, had they got to know you.
We appreciate it very much. Thank you for your hard work. I know.
Thank you. So we'll, uh, we'll sign this stuff and you can pick it up. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go quick to continue public hearing thirty-six dash eighteen. Is Mr. Sariva here? Michael Sariva?
Sariva.
Sariva? Okay, this is the second, third, fourth time. Uh, what's the wishes on the board? I would say, I recommend we, we deny.
Thank you, Paul.
Whispered.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. All right, Mr. Baptiste has a motion on thirty-six dash eighteen, Michael Sariva, fifteen South Boulevard, to deny with prejudice. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Thank, two years. Thank you. You guys could also
So what does that mean for us?
He needs two years to come back and apply. He has to wait two years. Thank you very much. Have a good night. All right.
Three times she hasn't been here yet. Okay, so we're back to thirty-three eighteen. Thank you. Thank you, it is tomorrow. Mine.
Oh, happy birthday. All right, uh, next public hearing, it is thirty-nine dash eighteen, Sign Design, three, oh, six, six.
It's this one. The zoning board appeals to hold a public hearing on October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wayham Multi Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. zero, two, five, seven, one. To consider petition number thirty-nine dash eighteen for a special permission, permit slash variance from the requirements of Article eleven, section one, one, three, eight, number four. Article eleven, section one, 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 eight of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Sign Design, one seventy Liberty Street, Brockton, Mass. oh, two, three, zero, one. Seeking to replace front and sidewall facade signs on an existing structure under a new business name located at thirty sixty-six Cranberry Highway, East Wayham, Mass. That appears on assessors map, one thirty-one lot, one, zero, two, zero, in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
All right, name and address for the record.
Ashley Jimenez, address one seventy Liberty Street, Brockton, Mass. oh, two, three, zero, one, Sign Design.
Okay. Let us know, what are you going to do?
So, um, I'm here on behalf of Urban Neon for Harbor Freight. And we are proposing to put, um, internally lit channel letters on the front of the building, replacing the old Benny's sign. And also on the side of the building, um, basically for visibility and advertisement. The Benny's sign, we were able to scale and our Harbor Freight sign is actually coming in smaller at one forty-nine point five square feet, whereas the existing Benny's sign was one fifty-three point six five square feet. The secondary sign, we are proposing at a hundred and eighteen point eighteen square feet, which is going to be on the side of the building. Visually seen shooting up Cranberry Highway, um, with the building being on your right-hand side. We also have, um, some other businesses on Cranberry Highway that have been allowed to have two large signs, um, such being AJ Mark's Jewelers, Advanced Auto Parts, CVS Pharmacy, um, Dollar Tree doesn't have two signs, but the size of the sign is, is very large. Planet Fitness, they also have a very large sign in Stop and Shop. Harbor Freight is the only tenant in this building. And based on the size that we're proposing, we believe that it is proportionate to the size of the whole building.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mr. Jake?
Uh, no questions.
Jen?
No questions.
Wilma?
I have, I have a couple of questions. Uh, this is the old Benny's building?
Yes.
Um, and that, uh, that, that roof collapsed. Yeah, when are you going to, uh?
We're just a, we're just a sign company. We wouldn't have anything to
That was already fixed.
They fixed it, Wilma.
Well, they did?
Yeah.
That big wind thing?
Last year.
They did fix it.
Yeah, and it didn't look like it when I went by the
I don't think they're going to run a business with a home. Yeah, they fixed it immediately after.
They, they have one company that, one day.
Probably only put a flat roof on, probably. Uh, that's why it didn't. But also for the signs, the, uh, the signs that you recommended that are up, those signs were up before, uh, we had a signing bylaw.
The Benny's signs you're referring to?
Yeah, the ones you're talking about. Most of them were there. I think all of them, really. But I know that, uh, did you, um, the signs that displayed, uh, can't have any lighting? That you can have your lighting going up to the sign, but you can't have the lighting becoming out.
Internally lit?
Yeah.
So all the businesses that I just named off have internally lit channel letters?
They, as I said, they were all put up before our signing bylaw.
Have you had any complaints?
Huh?
Have you had any complaints?
No, because of the way they were put up too.
Okay.
But they were all together. You, the, um, I'm just saying that you have to realize that you, you check in the, you have to check the signing bylaws to, uh, put up a sign in Wayham. I'm, uh, I'm just commenting on what I realize and the signs that go up.
Right.
You know.
We, we realize that, um, we're proposing internally lit channel letters because Cranberry Highway, as you know, is very busy. And there's multiple businesses on that strip. Like I said, I mean, every other business that I just named off has internally lit channel letters. And I don't know if, like I said, I don't know if you've had any complaints about that, but I mean, this, that, we feel that this is appropriate based on the, the environment that's on Cranberry Highway.
Did you, uh, check whether the, uh, inspectional, I don't see any, any, uh, letter from
While, while we doing this one, is there anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or against this sign project? I hear none.
I make a motion, we close this here.
Oh? Okay.
I'd, I'd second that motion.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion, we grant as presented.
Let's close the public hearing. All in favor to close, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay. Motion?
I make a motion, we grant as presented, number one.
I'd second, okay.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Let's sign it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. As, um, as I'm writing here, as a matter of conversation, seems to me, I remember hearing some scuttlebutt that this jazz in our bylaws about internally lit signs was originally intended to go, to be against neon signs and it's poorly worded. I, I think that I'll also comment that an internally illuminated sign is far superior than a sign with lights outside it flashing on it and reflecting. So I just want to make the comment because I think a bylaw needs to be addressed.
Maybe next time meeting. Take a note, Ken.
The, uh, if you wanted to get some articles in, suggest them by November sixth.
What else do we have tonight?
Meeting. All right. So let's sign this, uh,
Motion to grant. The reason can no conditions standard. Not detrimental.
All right, uh, I guess, uh, last one, Mr. Perry.
In keeping.
Sorry for keeping you late. Thirty-three dash eighteen ninety-six L on C.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for continuing this, uh,
No problem.
Two weeks ago, when I followed up with the holiday there.
All right. This public, uh, hearing is still open. Mr. Mr. Requena signed, he found the plan showing there was one lot in two thousand and fourteen. Showing that's as a one lot, and he talked to Mr. Bowen. He said, Mr. Bowen, Attorney Bowen, do you agree with the building inspector?
Well, that's not what Rick told me Monday, but that's neither here nor there. That's not what Rick Bowen told me Monday, but that's neither here nor there.
Ma, he didn't tell you.
I talked to both of these guys on Monday again.
This Monday?
This last Monday, two days ago. You know, that's a GAF plan, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that's not what creates the lot. The lot is created way back in the eighteen hundreds.
Okay.
When the owners of the handy lot and the owners of the shirtlift lot draw that line right down the middle. And, you know, at that point, there's no land, and I'm talking now with the eighteen hundreds, that's available to be combined with that triangle. Make it any larger or any different than it is, and that's all there is to it. I mean, it's over five thousand square feet. It's got over fifty-foot fringes way, way over in both cases. And, you know, the fact that GAF comes up and draws a plan that
I, I totally agree if it's fifty
Yeah, I mean, I just don't see, I just honestly can't see an issue. And now, when I talked to Mr. Bowen Monday, he didn't remember talking to anybody about the thing. Well, you know, you're
He did, uh, I did get an email from him. I personally got an email from him, I think the rest of the board. And he said if Mr. Requena can find these plans and it justify Mr. Requena claimed that it's not, and which Mr. Requena did, we could go back and get more clarification from Mr. Bowen. But I, I would hate to go again, well, to continue without his comment because he is involved. He did send us emails. So if we could continue it to just get a definite answer, because he's saying he talked to you Monday. I talked to him two weeks ago about it.
Well, maybe, maybe Rich is getting to see how this I am. I don't know. He's never talked to anybody about it.
The, the position is that in two thousand and fourteen, it's shown as one lot combined with with, with property beyond the right-of-way, the, the Squirrel Island Road.
You got the side of Squirrel Island Road.
And it's shown as one lot in two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, but what's his position regarding this application?
Mr., Mr.
I'm sorry, Jim, I, I spoke over you and I didn't hear what you said.
That's all right. My, my question is, okay, town council says he thinks it was one lot at one time.
If Mr. Requena could provide.
But there's an application in front of us for a variance, if I understand correctly, for something that's been given a new number.
Not a variance. He's, he's saying it's a grandfather, to turn down Mr. Requena's, uh,
We're still talking about overturning the building inspector. We haven't even gotten to the variance issue yet.
Not a variance.
It's not a variance, so the
He wants to over
No, I, I filed for both. I filed for alternate relief. But we've only talked so far about the grandfathering of the lot.
So, if I understand, I mean, let's talk about the elephant in the room rather than the semantics. There's a thirty-one thousand square foot triangular lot. If we say it's buildable, we collect taxes on a built lot. If we say it's unbuildable, we collect taxes on undeveloped property. Is that correct?
Yeah, you might even end up with it.
Well, the town may end up with it.
Yeah, I mean, it's
Yeah, okay.
That's the hardship. It, it's no good.
And I, and I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get to the point, what i- is the, is the town hard up for open space? Do we want to create this thirty, this three-quarter acre lot? You know, I, I don't know. I mean, I just, I'm kind of talking, thinking out loud here. Do we do the town a favor leaving it as woods, or do we do the town a favor putting a house on it and collecting some taxes?
Obviously, it's better
I, I think bedrooms cost us money every time they get put in because of, because of the schools and et cetera, but
Right, but defeating, defeating the whole bylaw.
You charge us plenty though for the schools. You charge us plenty for the police and the fire. It, it's a win-win situation for the town if a house is built on that lot.
I think we lose money on houses, but I'm not sure about that. I don't, I'm not on the
It's not the point.
That's not the point, yeah.
It's not the point. There's a bylaw. We have somehow to adhere to it. We can't just overlook a bylaw. I, I mean, I, what do you think, Jake?
I have nothing at this time.
Jen?
I'm not ready till I hear from Rick.
From Mr. Bowen?
Okay, then.
I think that's, I, because like I said, I talked to him two weeks ago. You said you talked Monday. I haven't talked to him since. I wish he called me or sent me email.
I, I wish he had after I talked to him Monday, because he said, I don't remember ever hearing about anything about
Oh, no, I got an email from him.
But I, I believe you, Nazi. I don't like, my last thing I had was Rick was kind of similar.
So can we, can we continue this, uh, the fourteen? The fourteen, we're here.
Fourteenth of November?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Jim is not here.
With the board, I'll still cooperate. You want the exact fourteen? I'll be here. Ken, can you remind me? No, I'm only kidding. I, I won't miss it.
If you don't mind. So let's, uh,
Thanks.
Let's get a motion, continue this until the fourteen. What was that?
And somebody will get Mr. Bowen here.
And I'll contact Rich Bowen through.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, let's get it in writing from him this time.
Yeah, I think in writing.
All right, that's a good idea.
In writing that he'll be here and writing what his opinion is?
In writing on his decision, if he, if he, if he's, what he told you. He's saying you agree with it, but my, the email I get
No, no, he just said he didn't, he hadn't heard from anybody about it and didn't remember talking with anybody about it. That's all he said. We didn't discuss any further details after that.
All right.
Didn't discuss the facts of the lot. I just asked him what his opinion was on the license. I don't know anything about it.
Well, let me, my recollection was talking to him and his email, he said, so maybe you come prepared next time. He's saying if Mr. Requena come up with this plan, it's deemed unbuildable. Which Mr. Requena did in the last hearing.
Which one have you got? Which, which, uh?
The one that two thousand and fourteen. The eleven, by, by GF eleven, uh, seven, fourteen.
Why?
But are these plans on record?
I just want the
It's not grandfathered.
What, what?
I mean, I have them all.
By virtue of what?
See, Mr. Perry saying this is a grandfather lot, but there's a plan. It used to be one lot, say
No.
What's, what about
One big piece of land.
Right.
It was in Pappy George's estate.
Right.
Okay? That doesn't mean this lot. Because the result of Squirrel Island Road running over here was not a separate lot.
It ma, it does make sense.
Yes, it's part of
It does make it part of it. You're absolutely right. So, yeah, you do have a case.
I know I'm not stupid right now. See, I mean, I've been doing this a long time.
I know you are.
This is a no-brainer.
And I don't want to argue with you.
It's gotten out of control, really. I mean, just give me a variance. Give me a variance.
I'd rather do it right, I, I don't know what they want to do, but I personally, I'd rather, I'd be more comfortable to overturn the Mr. Requena's decision than give it a variance personally.
Okay, well, I, you know, like I said, I'm trying to cooperate with the board on this one. I'm in here, this is my
I, I, I
I'm in. I, I'm not getting far, and I just can't understand why it just seems such a simple matter.
It does sound like a simple matter, but we, we really, I know he's involved, Mr. Bowen, so I would like to, I mean, Mr. Baptiste, want to hear from him.
Well, I think I could have been here two weeks ago.
Well, like, two weeks ago, what happened, two weeks ago, Mr. Requena came here and he had all the answers with Mr. Bowen. So unfortunately, he couldn't make it tonight. I guess he has something to do with his kid. So I, I'll make sure we have final answer for you. All right, very good.
But there's no sense bringing him back if Bowen and Requena aren't going to both be here. We can put a table in the middle and they can arm wrestle for the right answer.
Well, they could just
How about they do a written answer?
We've decided
And you decide whether your question
Yeah, all right.
Send this meeting.
All right, so let's continue, motion to continue for November fourteenth, please. Can somebody give me a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Do, can you do it with four members?
At least we could hear, and you could jump in next time.
Okay, okay.
Do we have a board that night?
We have, uh, four of us.
I won't be here.
He would, he, if it doesn't, if anything don't happen on the fourteen, we could continue until he's here on the second, on the December twelfth. So he has a, so we have a motion by Jim to continue till November fourteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Thank you, Counselor. Yes?
Is this an, uh, open meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, did you ask for a public?
Oh, I'm very sorry, we didn't. Can you come forward?
We haven't closed the meeting yet, though.
Yeah, we, it's not closed, so absolutely. So, uh, let's resend our vote, let's reopen it quick. Motion to reopen the hearing for public comment. I'm very sorry, sir.
No, that's okay.
No, it's just-
Excuse me, did we close the meeting?
No, we didn't close the public hearing. We continue it.
And this isn't regarding to that, is it?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. So, yes, so moved to reopen.
So do I have a second to reopen?
Second.
Second by Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Sorry, your name, sir?
My name is Jim Manase, and I'm precinct four, Cranberry Highway.
Yeah.
Was there, was that lot individually taxed? So was there a tax record saying this lot was paid?
We don't know.
Well, that's pretty easy to find out, I think.
Uh, that's something maybe the assessors, I will answer this, we don't know. Is it individually taxed, Counselor? It's not individually taxed, it's not-
Okay, so it wasn't a separate lot, correct?
See, sometimes, let, let me, let me explain something. Sometimes individually, that, just to play, just to be-
Both sides of the coin.
Right, yeah. It don't, it don't matter if it's individually taxed. A lot of times, it's taxed unbuildable. It don't mean nothing. It could be buildable. Sometimes a lot of lots taxed buildable, and they're not buildable. So it doesn't really matter. Sometimes the assessors are not attorneys, or they don't, it's very hard for them to, to make specific on each lot. So a lot of times, it doesn't mean anything. What, sometimes, like I said, a lot be valued at a hundred dollars, not buildable. You come look at the numbers, it is buildable, and vice versa.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I'm asking is if it was taxed as an individual lot. If it was, then it, then it's a standalone lot. If it wasn't, then it was part of the large parcel. Now, Squirrel Island Road is a right-of-way, I believe, where the name was Squirrel, Squirrel Island Road. It doesn't fit the definition, or it doesn't fit what would be currently accepted as a road. It's a dirt road. It's a right-of-way. Known as Squirrel Island Road, I believe. I think you might even own some of the property that the road goes through there, Mr. Perry. If you look at the transfer of properties, I think it's described by fifty-nine pages just for the Wareham parcels that were transferred from Pappy George Estate. And if you wanna peer through those, you could probably find the one lot. So, um, I'm not, I'm not saying not to grant it. But if it, if it, if it wasn't a separate lot, and it is now a separate lot, with dimensions, wouldn't it be just as, probably easier just to go with a variance here? Instead of, you know, instead of keep throwing it back. That's pretty much what I'm saying.
You're absolutely right. Could be easier or not easier, but that we, we just have to show some respect for the commissioner and the attorney, because we spoke about him with it. We just wanna get a final answer from them.
And they, well, from what you explained, they said it wasn't a separate lot.
Right, but Mr. Perry said, talked to him Monday, he said he, Mr. Bowen said he never heard from anyone, so we just wanna clarify.
Okay, I'm, I'm good. I just figured I'd put my two, 'cause I did spend a little time looking at it.
Yeah.
You go through fifty-nine pages of deeds, which, that deed covers three different towns.
Right.
Transfer of the property.
Well, all of us-
Ninety-six.
Correct.
Agreed.
See, we're not attorney, except Mrs. Skendrick. I think she's a family attorney, aren't you?
Attorney also.
Yeah.
Different things, so it's hard to do these, we, we, I really don't understand that much. It's hard, it's very complicated.
May I just, real quick, says, I know you guys need to move on, but I ended up owning from that, that line I just talked about, the other side, the church of property. And I had a similarly situated lot, lot one B, on plans at the planning board, originally, originally. Never taxed separately, taxed as one big parcel. Well, as I moved along and did plans, ultimately, your prior building commissioner agreed, even though it was all in one plan to start with, that that was a grandfathered lot because it was the opposite side of Squirrel Island Road. And that was a correct decision. That's in accordance with chapter nine, uh, forty B. So this one is situated just the same. That's why to me, it's a no-brainer, and I'm not surprised, but, but that's how things are taxed. It's part of a big parcel, but then we've got roads running down, we've got a piece of property running in there, and, and it changes a whole variety of things.
All right, can I, I just wanna get a comment from Mr. Rowley. Square Island would, if it's-
I was just having some thoughts myself on it. Well, the piece that, this is the remnant of, is that on the other side of Squirrel Island Road? That's not a part of your holdings now?
Well, I own, I actually had two lots on the other side of Squirrel Island. The side that, uh, that I call the handy side.
You're talking about the piece that went across Squirrel Island Road that this little piece is a part of? All the property on the other side of Squirrel Island Road that this was a part of, is that not your possession?
No, never was, never was.
Never was.
Never was, no.
Continue, continue, okay. I think we need Nazzy's signature on it.
No, absolutely not.
I don't think you signed this one. Did you sign this? That's your signature. This is mine. This is Kyle. This is Jake, one, two, three, four.
He sold it along with-
Jake signed it twice. Who didn't sign it? Jen? Jake signed it twice.
I, I didn't vote on it, Wilma did.
You didn't vote on anything?
I mean, I voted on the table.
Absolutely. I brought in the nineteen fifty-one street, that's the show-
The sign, we're talking about the signs.
Showing as a road, showing the-
The sign is- The building permits that have used it.
That's your signature.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
He signed twice.
And eight lots on it.
Create a little-
Wilma didn't vote on it?
Triangle lot for that piece.
Wilma didn't vote on it?
To separate it out. And then pass a variance for that thing. Why would he sign twice?
He, he got confused. He doesn't know what his signature was on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Charlie, what are you saying, adding a piece where?
Squirrel Island Road has been used as frontage for multiple houses.
Right.
So at some point, the building inspector must have said, okay, that's got frontage. This has frontage on Squirrel Island Road, whether it was a part of a bigger piece or not.
Absolute, I do agree.
And when you look at some of the lots that are in that area, they, they zigzag all over that road.
Correct.
I don't see what the difference is. What might clarify it would be if a plan was drawn that simply showed it as a separate parcel, showing Squirrel Island Road as having the frontage right there as well as bearing-
It's been, we got a copy with, with it shown that way.
Does it show it as a separate lot?
It shows it as unbuildable.
His plan show, yeah, I think does, but it also does show the other land on the other side of Squirrel Island. You're saying one little, one little plan with that one lot. I mean, I, that would help the board. I can have that drawn for, in time for the next meeting.
Well, that was done for the planning board, they set it aside as a separate lot.
Let me, let me ask you something, Counselor. Do you own the one zero nine, this? You still own this lot? So you own, oh, you don't own this?
No, I never owned any of the land we're talking about. I own this, okay? Which doesn't touch this, the other side of Squirrel Island Road.
But you never, you don't own this?
No, I don't. Ninety-six, we'll be all the same.
Are you ninety-six, really, or something?
No, I'm not. No, absolutely not.
Can you get a piece from it to add it to this and make it sixty thousand?
How do you cross a road? I came into you with a plan.
I know.
I said, like, I wanna jump across the road, 'cause I only got a hundred and sixty-foot frontage, I need a hundred and eighty. So I'm gonna use twenty on the other side, which won't be out the door.
Well, I do, I do, I do agree that Square Island is a road, like it or not.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Whether a, a parcel of land crossed the road or not, it would be like any other-
Yeah, I, I mean, it is a road. It is a road, like it or not.
Not a, from the best of my knowledge, it's not a town way. It is not a way which approved by the planning board, but it's a way that was in existence prior to the adoption of subdivision control. So it comes under that category of chapter forty-one. So if a plan was drawn that shows that with frontage, I would think that you still might get a variance, still might need a variance because it's not big enough for a building?
No, I, I mean, no, I, we don't need a variance. If, if we agree that's a road and separates a lot, why would we need a variance?
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to eliminate the, uh, issue that will probably come up with the building inspector, that's all.
With square footage, what's the square footage requirement for that area?
Sixty.
Sixty, so you got, yeah. So there'd be a variance from square footage, that's why.
No, but if it's, if we agree that the road separate these lots, as we-
Grandfathered.
It's grandfathered.
You agree with that, it's grandfathered.
Under story. Under story.
We need a new plan.
Send what I'm saying, Jen?
I was there three meetings ago, but-
The, the problem that you've got, though, is if that previous plan said it was not a buildable lot, somehow you've gotta erase that. That's, that's the issue. You can't let that stand. So it would seem to me that in order to make it a buildable lot, the Board of Appeals probably has to make a decision on whether it would be considered a buildable lot. And by doing that, then you could go to the planning board with a final plan that shows it to the separate area with a notation that it's considered a buildable lot under a variance.
But why did GAF put not a buildable lot? I mean, on what, on what, uh?
They could just, nobody, nobody says nothing, and nobody-
On, by, by the application of-
They should have just called it a parcel.
They should have called it a parcel.
Parcel.
Yeah.
But the planning board wants to see something.
See, but GAF doesn't get to decide whether it's-
No, they don't, yeah, exactly, right. I mean, they may have, they may have noted that based on the bylaws as, as they existed at the time, um-
Bylaws haven't changed since two thousand fourteen, if that's the-
Yeah, I, I mean, why?
I mean, let, let's, let's, let's go back to the-
I mean, I don't understand.
If engineer writes on it, not buildable, or the town says it's not buildable, it doesn't mean anything.
Right, yeah, right, yeah, I understand.
Just like you said on the tax rolls.
Engineer wrote around there that this town surged in the street, wouldn't put the pipes in the road.
I know why he did it, just to make the planning board happy. Guaranteed.
No, he did, no, you're right, as far as not buildable, but he should have gone on a little further and said not buildable until further ado, which is what we did on my plans, when we went to the planning board.
Did Kyle get out of here?
Make it so you don't have this, uh, issue again.
So we need to wa, a mile, a new miler and be recorded?
I, I think that the fact that it's got that notation, it's not a buildable lot. The fact that you go before the planning board where they form a lot that just shows it, will not remove the non-buildable portion. Seems to me that you need to grant relief from the fact that it's already been defined on that plan as unbuildable.
Well, yeah, but is that telling on record?
I don't thi, does that have-
I think it is, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
All these plans went on record.
He's on record.
It is.
Okay.
And with, with a variance to that effect, that you grant a variance for the lot size and that it's separated by Squirrel Island Road, then Bob could have a plan drawn with that notation on it to go back to the planning board, and that plan will then essentially say that you've granted relief for that lot, and they can endorse it.
So bottom line, the way to go is a variance.
It's just my opinion, I'm not a lawyer.
Well, certainly meets all the requirements of variance. Half the time we come, half the time, meaning we're sitting, half the time we come here, we don't. This one does because of shape.
Yeah.
Up and down, fairing hill road, most of the roads are West Wareham. You got rectangular lots, be they square or actual rectangles. If this were rectangular, you'd be way over the sixty thousand square feet. It's a triangle, so it's half way. So, I mean, it, it meets all of the, I should, you guys already talked about.
I tell you, I promise you, I'll have a final answer for you on the fourteen. Guaranteed.
Sure, I can, you want to get another plan done? That was a question, Charlie, would you like to get another plan?
Now, I think, I think we'll, we'll go with the variance.
Till the fourteenth, Bob.